Good afternoon, welcome to the November fifteenth, twenty twenty-three Board Policy Review Committee Special Session. Roll call, please.
Roll call, Mulvaney Henry.
Here.
Bryant.
Here.
Brenneman.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Can I motion to approve Seaving's agenda?
No move, seconded.
Motion to approve the agenda has been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Roll call, Mulvaney Henry.
Aye.
Bryant.
Aye.
Brenneman.
Aye.
That motion carries.
Thank you. Think we're continuing our customer service policy review? If I'm not mistaken, we uh we will begin at four dot zero two. Do I have that correct?
Yes, that's where I had.
Awesome.
Can you increase her volume? Rose, I was asking if we could turn up the volume on on our side for you.
Okay.
There you go. Okay.
Okay, so on on four dot zero two, Jeff or Tom, do either of you guys have any comments or um edits? Questions?
I have none on that section.
I did have nothing.
First paragraph or section, Jeff?
On those paragraphs, there's three.
Um, I had a question on, Tom, did you have anything?
No, I'm good.
Okay, I just had a question. Um, the par- or the beginning of the first paragraph that was struck, it it does that appear somewhere else in the document? Or do we just not have any contracts with any customers?
We have tried to eliminate all the contracts.
Are there any contracts in place today?
There are not.
Okay, thank you. Um, in the last paragraph, uh, the where you guys moved that down a little bit, um, on the second line, continued automatically in, I would just add the word the owner's name. And that's all I had.
On the rental property, there was an issue once, uh, where the I I imagine it was because the renter couldn't get the utilities turned on in their name, so they had it turned on in the owner's name. And then they moved out leaving a large bill and the owner didn't wanna, you know, uh, didn't wanna pay for what his own, what his renters had. Do we need to address that in this policy anywhere, or is it addressed somewhere?
I think if if you have signed up and it is in your name, you are responsible, no matter who you allow to use the utilities, you are responsible.
Are they a co-signer, or were they, did they have it just entirely in their name?
It would have been in the customer's name.
Excuse me?
It would have been in the owner's name, because if the other person had been on there, there had been a large bill. They would have still had that bill to pay because it would have went now to that account. And that's what if that's what's being avoided and their name was not on there. But if the customer's name, regardless of it was top name or second name, it's really your account. It's both this, the account holder's account. So if that name would have been on there, the bill would have been transferred to that account.
So in a situation where a landlord has a tenant who in service with the BPU with a outstanding bill and leaves, the the bill stays with that person and then the landlord can open, can revert to him without that bill coming to him because it was not his bill, it was the bill of the person. So so the the landlord would regain the property, control the property with the utilities at zero unless they have an outstanding bill on their own.
So if they wanted to continue the utilities after the land, after the renter moved on and had, uh, they would send a letter in saying, we want the utilities to stay on. They would be responsible then for the utilities from that time forward, but they would not be responsible for with the renter.
And they'd have to revert it to their name?
It was in their name, it would go with the customer that was in that address.
How do they, do they usually, does like landlords just end one and then it moves into another person's name? I guess it depends on how quickly they rent. Otherwise, I'm just wondering how often they revert back to landlord.
Yeah, we have quite, yeah, yes.
I I actually have a reverse scenario that was brought to my attention this afternoon. And I've got a landlord, commercial landlord downtown Kansas City, Kansas. The tenant is a bank. And the landlord is MIA. And the bank literally has no idea whether or not utilities have been paid, whether or not utilities are getting ready to get shut off. Um, how how would we deal with that? How does the bank deal with that?
The bank would need to bring in their lease if they have the right to um have utilities in their own name, which I would imagine they would, but they would need to bring something authorizing them to turn on the utilities in their name.
Well, so just it, so if the utilities are active today in the landlord's name, in this scenario, could, provided that the lease allowed for it, could the bank still bring in their auth- well, nobody can bring in, can somebody call and provide the authorization for them to put the authority or the uh utilities in the bank's name? While it's active in the landlord's name?
Thanks, Ali. If they have a lease, yes, they can send that in and we would sign up the tenant.
Okay, thank you.
That, in that case, in any case, whether it's a commercial, residential, whatever, you can start the process, if you have a lease, to transfer a property, transfer an account from one person to another. You have to have the proper documentation to show that you are tenant or will be the owner somehow. Whatever the requirements are for establishing a new account, you'd have to have those documenta- those documents with you.
Right, in it, you know, if the lease said utilities to remain with the property owner, then they would have been able to have something shown.
Absent of that.
Yeah.
So if the bank wanted to, if they wanted it in their name, they could get it transferred in their name.
Okay, thanks. Next section, security deposits. I don't know that we concluded this discussion last time. I know we certainly had a pretty robust discussion. Um, Jeff or Tom?
I'm still of the opinion that this is a topic for the entire board. I would say that we as the committee could work through as many of the other areas and then uh that way we can, we can button up as much of the policy as possible and then come back and and save those for the for the end.
So the so the service fees and security deposits and that thing, just kind of put them on the
On the back burner so that we can get all the other stuff taken. I mean, a lot of these other things, I think we can, we can kind of resolve. But I think that one there is a conversation. I mean, if you look at in five oh one, the the stricken part from the second, all customers will be subject to a maximum deposit. Deposit is reduced. I mean, uh I don't know, and maybe and maybe a way to look at it, because I know this won't happen during my, uh, the rest of my term. But uh, when you guys look beyond that, you know, maybe maybe an idea is to look scaling down the maximum deposit and and then installing uh penalty deposits for non-compliance to the contract, which, you know, of payments. So basically, instead of having like a five hundred dollar max deposit, maybe it's a two hundred and fifty dollar max deposit. But you're subject to up to two hundred and fifty more dollars of deposits based on your payment history. So if you, if you miss a couple or whatever, however you want, you know, whatever the numbers end up being, maybe the next one is an additional hundred dollar deposit will be required. And then if you continue to do that, uh, which is not supposed to be done, then and a another, a third deposit of a hundred and fifty dollars more could be added. So that gets them all the way up to, you know, five hundred dollar deposit and that's the max, you know, and so I I don't know, I mean, that may be a way. I'm just looking at the the entrance hurdle. When you have, you know, one thing that's that's good to hear is that we're going to allow customers to make payments on their deposit. That that's a big help. But, you know, for years, uh, I have heard from people about, you know, you have to pay so many dollars to be a uh customer of of the BPU. And I and I'm sure that the ones that were telling me this were not the ones that were getting no deposit. They were the ones that were getting closer to the maximum deposit. So so it's how do we not make becoming a customer to BPU so onerous?
So I just do want to clarify my thing when we talk about maximum deposit. Most customers will maybe get a substantial or limited, the maximum deposit normally is if we don't have a social security number, we can't run any information, we have no information, and then we have no collection possibilities. If that customer doesn't pay the bill, because that's the way the collection agencies work is under knowing that, you know, what their social security number is and that type of thing. So if we don't get one, if a person doesn't pay, then our means of collection are not there. So that's when the maximum deposit is normally.
Yeah. Yeah, I I don't know. That's why I think that this is
Five is most of the time what a customer will have.
How much, three seventy?
Three seventy-five is the highest that they will have if they give us a social security number too.
I mean, we can always suggest flex pay to them also, and then there's no deposit.
Yeah, see, and that's what I really like is the is pushing more toward the flex play. I think that it's it's a good tool for those with limited resources. Perhaps
if the staff would just go through the changes and explain what 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 you made, what changes you did make and the reasoning behind those changes. And then if we have any comments or anything, we can take those comments.
Okay, so we see the portion that was taken out and the portion that was added, basically saying, it says the same thing, but we we took out it with this all will be subject to a maximum deposit. The deposit may be reduced if the customer supplies the approved personal identifiable information. Since we said in the beginning that people would have to have that information, personal identifiable information, then it was just basically repeating that information here. So so we just, that didn't need to be put in there. It just need to be how that will be determined by sliding. So that's the reason that portion of that was removed. It's identified.
You may want to, on that last line, the deposit will be charged to your monthly bill. You may want to specify how many payments it will be split across, split across. Specify it so that there's no later somebody saying, I heard it was this number versus this number. You know, if it's going to be five payments, then it should be
I think when this was drafted, it wasn't drafted with the idea that there were going to be payments on it. We we made that
Yeah. No, but we had that, yeah, that discussion. And I think that putting that in there, that your your deposit will be charged to your monthly ba- pay uh bill uh billing in five equal increments.
And we
Whatever the number, whatever the number you break the deposit into.
And I can and I can understand how that may uh be, but that's something we would talk to customers about. If we put three monthly installments and then decide it's, it would be good to change that to four or we have a lesser deposit and we decide it would be two, then it has to go back through. So when we can say it can be
You can put up to.
It can break through some monthly installments. Maybe we just put that in there and leave it at that. The determine, the determine monthly installments as the absolute number, because then uh
I think you should put a maximum.
Customers
Should at least have the maximum.
Well, customers can use payment arrangements, which with their deposit, if it's included in there, we'll break that up as well.
Well, I, but but we we talked about this last last session, did we not? I mean,
Yes.
You guys had agreed that based on what y'all heard from the nonprofits in March, that we were going to split deposits up into at least three months.
And we came up with a number, that was not a number they came up with, it's something we tested when we went into the new C I S system. So I mean, we we can always include that in there, but understand it could, if they do, other things could
You could flex, but I think that you should put a max, you know, up to X number. That way, I just, I just foresee somewhere along the way, somebody saying, nobody told me that number. And it's not in your policy.
But if we say up to and doesn't that give the staff the flexibility to simply just put it on the initial deposit and that's the one month?
Well, there may be a customer that says, I don't want it spread across payments. I just want to just put it on my first month. So so that leaves it open for that possibility. If you say it will be a set number of months, that restricts it. But if you say up to, that tells somebody that, look, if you got a three hundred dollar deposit and it's up to five times, you're going to be paying at least sixty dollars a month.
Well, I want to go back
As determined by the customer.
Go back to what Janetta was saying. So here's a customer that signs up. And whatever deposit amount they're charged, if that's spread over three months, one month into their payment, they come, they into their uh being a customer, they call in and say, put me on a payment arrangement. Now that that deposit now gets spread over six months or twelve months, okay? I don't think, I don't think you guys were listening to that and Janetta, if you could speak up a little bit.
Well, I understand what she was saying, but why would we let the deposit be part of that? I would think that the deposit would stay, the deposit is a separate contract.
That's why I'm going back to that, just to make sure
Yeah, I think
We complete that conversation.
Yeah, that is, this is a separate contract. You're making a contract for your deposit. It has nothing to do with your billing.
So that's the current process. That's the current process. So if you want to change it, that's why I'm going back to it.
Well, right now, where our current process is they have to pay it all at once.
Right.
So
Or they make, or they make payment arrangements. That's what we were saying. If they make payment arrangements, then it is split up over over the six months. And the three monthly installments was as as had that discussion, as you said, with the agencies, that that was a big lump sum that that people couldn't pay at one time. However, they've always had the ability either to move flex pay and have it removed and or when you get your bill, if you're not able to pay that bill, when you get that first bill, then they can, they can get payment arrangements, which will break it up over six months. I don't know that we want to take that ability away or that we want to just say it's three monthly installments. And as you said, we leave the deposit out and that has to be paid within those three months and no longer will be available for payment arrangements.
I think the payment, yeah, I think that your your deposit is separate and apart from your bill. This is a, this is a initiation fee, basically.
I'm a new customer. I come in, sign up for, sign up for service. I, under the rules that we have now, I have to pay that deposit to get service, correct?
No.
I don't have to pay.
No, you don't have to pay your deposit to get service. When we sign you up for service, you get signed up for service and then you get billed. Some, I do know that some companies, you have to pay the deposit in advance before before you are even signed up as a customer for service. So you have to pay your deposit and then you start into your service. With ours, you don't pay the deposit first and then you get service.
I thought I've had people tell me that they couldn't get utilities on unless they paid their deposit. So the deposit comes on
Well, I've ever been here.
Okay, the deposit comes on the first bill. Well, that's why I say there's three sizes. So so you're currently, though, Tom signs up for service. You tell him he's got a two hundred dollar deposit, uh, thirty days from now, he gets his bill and it is for the usage that he had during that that month and the two hundred dollar deposit. Because it's right now, it's all all in on one.
And I walk at the end of that first month without paying my bill and without having any deposit. Is that what you're? Let's see, that's where it kind of sounds like you need to get the the reason for the deposit.
It's to secure payment.
It's to secure payment.
I mean, that's what the deposit
And at the end of that first month, they walk, at least you've got that, you've got that deposit.
That's what we would like to have something to put toward that first bill if there is an issue, but that's not the way it's it's been, it comes like the first month still.
That, but that's why we're redoing the redoing this is that
So how does a gas company do it if you have to pay a deposit? Or Evergy or any of the others? Do we know, do they, do any of them charge a a fee, you know, a a deposit fee at the time of signup?
Not that, not that I know of. Um, I'm, I don't know if you have been a previous customer and have a payment history with them, what the, what the process may be. But if normally, if you are a new customer and sign up and and don't have that history and don't are a credit risk, then the deposit is not on there. When you become a credit risk, that's when the deposit is added on there. And they do have, they do have installments. If you've been a preused customer and have already got a credit history, it would be based on that. So, but I don't know if they collected really, and I don't know the gas company, I don't.
Yeah, and I doubt that, I doubt that there's a very low probability of that happening with a one-month customer. It's going to be somebody who's been here for a few months before they decide, because he just paid all that money to move into a place. Most people don't have the money to pay right, to move right back out.
And I would say one of the things that that potentially becomes an issue is when a person does sign in October or November, you're not, if we don't bill you immediately, you know, there is thirty days. And then when we get into a cold weather period, when it prevents us from doing shutouts for a long period of time, sometimes at the end of that period of time, that's when we have a very large bill and customers may then move on and then we are not able to collect.
Well, yeah, because it's spring and they're able to move again and, yeah.
So that that does create that risk.
Rosen, that uh, the Kansas Corporation Commission, the information that you had provided last meeting. I had gone through all of, do they have, do they address uh security deposits?
Oh, yeah. They have a very lengthy section on security deposits. So and that and that's what governs what Evergy and Atmos and all those that are regulated by the K C C have to abide by. And I would say that you know, you guys can review those for yourselves.
Or you want to push this into the full board or you want to?
I I I think that it needs more minds looking at it and more, because here's the thing is uh, this committee could come up with a suggestion on that and it's probably going to be a contentious point where uh it's going to be debated by the full board anyway. So I think that that's one that it's worth even bringing up to the full board and saying, I think this is something that we should seriously discuss because either determine that we're going to change the way we've been doing business or we're going to continue on with it. You know, I mean, there will be one change, the the uh break up into payments. So that'll be, and and the full board may agree that that's enough. That that is the right direction. So so I don't want to be the because I don't, I I won't be here to vote on the policies when they're all done, because these aren't going to finish until spring.
But you would like three monthly installments added.
I think three, I think that, you know, up to three, I, and I think that I think in reality, if if you want to be prudent, you know, the the earmark of this charge is to set money aside to cover non-payment. So I think that the idea is you need to get that in place and it needs to be treated separate and apart. It's not, it's not something that they've, they've used and created a bill for. It's not the maintenance of the system that's our base charge and everything like that. This is separate and apart. This is securing funds to protect the utility from non-payment.
How much do we have sitting in uh deposits today? How much do we, I know we have a line item for, how much is it?
It's around seven point three million dollars.
And we, do we refund those on an annual basis or only when an account is final?
If you have, you can correct me, uh, if you have good pay history.
Residential's two, three.
And for a two-year period, residential gets it refunded. For a three-year period, commercial gets it refunded.
Or when it's final.
Or when it's final.
And so Tom and Jeff, uh, so the K C C policy, that would be one year for residential and twenty-four months. You know, with other criteria in there, they got to pay, I think, you know, twenty or twenty-one or twenty-two months out of twenty-four on commercial side to get their deposit back.
Do they automatically get the deposit back or do they have to request it?
It's automatic.
Automatic.
Hey Lori.
And they get it back.
Before you take that away, Lori, what's our average annual bad debt?
So a percentage of revenue, it's a little bit under a half a percent of revenue, so.
Point five million, one point eight million.
Yeah. Exactly, yeah.
What what was that number, Jeff?
Just a little under two million. So, I mean, when you think about that, that's it's it's a considerable amount considering the number of deposit dollars we have. I mean, that's, that's that's well over fifteen percent of the total deposit dollars.
I I think, and in my mind, when I, when I look at the number that we're holding, it that just gives you a little bit of a preview of the the consistency and how customers are able to pay or, you know, pay their bill. And if we continue to hold that until they get to that point, but if they get to that point, which is a good pay history and we really don't have, you know, where we think we may have to use that to cover some of the debt, then it's refunded. But as long as you establish that history, then the money is refunded. But for those that don't establish that history and still continue to be a potential credit risk, because this is not, has not been established a good pay history, then we are holding that so that kind of, but it's again, until the good pay history or until they final, so that's kind of an insight into the history, the pay history of.
How how do we define good pay history, Janetta?
When they have, when they have less than three returned, I mean, I'm not sorry, returned late payment charges on their account. So within that two-year time period, if you get up to your third, it's over your third late payment charge, then it is not refunded. However, then we start looking at it and talking about
Not a disconnection, but a late payment charge.
Yes.
Jeff, to your point on the uncollectibles, I don't know where it is. I didn't, I didn't prepare what is coming now, but it
That's a touch.
At one point, that was about twice what the A P P A national average was.
The the uncollected.
High and a half percent is high.
Huh?
Yeah.
Percent is considered high.
Yeah, I know, that's saying it was either twice or or more than twice.
Yeah, yeah, because it should be a point two.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, it was quite a, maybe higher than that.
Yeah.
I mean, it has gone down for us and basically it's part of the, all the care program and everything else, people have had prepaid credits.
Yeah, yeah. That's why I really think that the prepaid is like huge, because because it's the it's the segment of the market that it impacts the most and they're the most
And we're trying to drive more and more people there, but it's not a force program, it's a voluntary program. So I mean, all you can do is try to encourage.
Yeah, encourage and hope and
Yeah.
And try to find ways to make it as appealing as possible.
Yep.
So that more people are willing. I mean, my hope would be as the demographics or city change to younger, uh, it'll be more widely accepted and, you know, because it's it's less interaction with the utility and that's why a lot of the younger people don't need as heavy of an interaction with the businesses they do business with. Yeah, I I mean, it's up to you guys, but I think that the full board should look at that. the full board should look at that five oh one, just for the finalized on it and.
Well, I would, I would suggest that the whole board look at it and probably look at it, just how we consider things. What's your appetite for risk?
Yeah.
Okay, how much risk do you really want to, want to consume, okay, take on, okay? Because we could talk about our, our uncollectibles write-offs. That continues to grow, that, that just puts us in a much better position. Deposits is one safeguard. That's not a fix-all, but at least, at least it is a safeguard. So it's still, if the board is completely averse to any risk, okay, then just give away everything, okay?
Well, it's not giving away everything, but, but it is, it's understanding the risk, because I mean, the rest of the numbers you'd need is you need to know how many dollars of deposits were recomped off of those accounts that defaulted versus the number of dollars defaulted so that you could, because you do have to, you do have to uh, subtract those from the equation to understand the true uncollected.
Right.
Debt. And, and then you have to look at that as a percentage, because ultimately, it's the general public who's paying that unpaid debt.
It is.
So it's a matter of just determining what level. I don't, I don't think that we can always put in, uh, applicable policies that are going to reduce all, all, all risk.
Right.
I mean, it's inherent with any business. It's just making it a cost-effective risk, you know?
Can be better managed and.
That, and, and it's known going into it that that's the accepted level that we're going to, we're going to say, we don't want to be above, you know, a point two percent of sales.
Yep.
Or something like that. And, and then you, then you can, then you have a goal and a metrics can get you there. So.
I would rather work on something like that.
Yeah, I, I think that.
At least, at least you can set those that way and then see how, how you can work towards achieving. But to your other point is those that don't pay, you're basically just shifting that cost to everybody else. Okay, and you're asking everybody else to pay it, because that's going to come.
Yes. Well, we already, but we already are doing, it's, it's already happening whether you, you are meaning it to happen or not. It already happens. Uh, that's, that's a risk that's inherent with any business that sells a product to, to the public and collects the payment after the sale. So it's just, it's a risk inherent. So. Um, so otherwise I say let's move on to five oh two.
Uh, hang on a second.
Okay.
What, um, what privacy policy that's capitalized in the fourth paragraph down? Is, is that the privacy policy that's on the BPU web page?
It's red. It used to be the red flag.
Maintains a privacy policy regarding the protection of personal business information.
That would be the red flag rules that we have.
Should we, should we identify the, is that a policy number or a? Maybe we should identify the number on there?
The number or.
Rob, you taking notes?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I know. I didn't bring my track change version. It's still up there. I brought the clean version. Broth, did you hear what, uh, was said here? Are you, are you okay with that?
I heard what was said, yeah.
Was that all for that one?
Uh, it's all I had.
Okay.
So, well, you want to go through five oh two and tell us the changes you made and explain why, but.
Uh, so in the second one with the first portion that we've added, it, it's talking about a servant African who provides a social security number that's returned to cease non-issued belonging to a person under age of eighteen or belonging to a person other than the African or is fraudulent, they shall be denied service or shall be charged a maximum deposit set, or set out in the fee and deposit schedule.
Why would, why would there be an or instead of just denied service?
And, and that is what we had before.
And maybe referred to the police or prosecutor's office have warranted. So, so in what scenario would we allow a person to open an account if with out a soc- a social security number that's not associated with somebody deceased, non-issued, belonging to eighteen, under eighteen or, and you know, if.
So we wouldn't take that, but if they came in and said, okay, that was a lie, but here's my real information, we would, and we verified it then.
But that's covered in the next line. That would be covered in the other line that says, any applicant who has previously submitted a fraudulent application within the past five years should be charged a maximum deposit. I mean, I don't see a reason to have that second part of that line in there. I don't think that you offer, because they shall be denied service and maybe referred to the police or prosecutor's office. That, I mean, that's just how I, that's how I feel about it, but you know, that you guys may change differently. I just don't believe that there's a reason to even mention, you can mention the fee and deposit schedule, which you do below when you say, any applicant.
So you just want that portion taken out?
I, I don't like that. I don't like that portion.
And maybe referred to the police, prosecutor's office.
Why did, why did we, why were we thinking of adding that?
So again, I think it's because they don't have any other options and we have to serve them if they come forward with the correct information. And so I, I understand the, who has previously submitted a fraudulent. I think reading that, that would probably cover this scenario. I mean, if we were thinking that what, I think we were thinking that that covered.
Longer term.
Longer terms, like, okay, you were here two years ago and you did this. We're still getting, but you know, we're, we're still not going to trust you, but.
I come to you and I give you fraudulent and you say, sorry, no service. I leave, I come back and go, my bad. That's a return. I, that's no longer the initial service. So that would be returning. So I, I just, I don't like leaving that in as, because it makes it sound like we may go ahead and let you with that bad information, but we're going to take some money from you first. I don't, I don't like.
So you want the first portion taken out?
Yeah, and you can leave the rest of it, because the rest of it is applicable at that point.
Right through it.
We'll strike.
Does anybody disagree with that? And the second one is just adding the policy number. Second change, the second paragraph.
That it has a schedule.
Yeah.
Yes, we is adding that.
Once again, you know, that'll be adjusting the deposit schedule. So, yeah. I think that, I think it's okay to leave it like that, because this part of the policy will key off of a previous policy that'll be discussed by the whole. It's just of reference.
I think the term final needs to be defined.
Oh, in that last sentence?
Yeah.
Terminated?
Closed.
No, a final is the term of art that they use. I've.
Closed.
Yes.
I just think it needs to be defined and capitalized.
Capitalized?
Hmm.
Okay. But I think the last meeting, the guys requested a definitions page and that.
Oh, yeah. True.
And then that one's going to be capitalized.
So we get to the next one, the residential. It's more of a question than anything. And I know it, it may be somewhere in this policy and I may not get to it before, uh, my time is up, so I would like to approach the subject of a widow or widower. Uh, this has happened multiple times uh, that I've had, I've had to have customer service assist. And I think that the policy is probably vague about, you know, how it's handled, because it, it talks about right here about all property owners will be, reside at the property will be required to complete the application process. But I know that there are older couples that there's only one of the two have done it. And that's where they run into the issue is that, you know, the husband put the paperwork in his name, they put all the bills in his name. And then that he passes away or vice versa, and the other person is left trying to get service in their name. I mean, they may continue, in some cases, they may continue paying for years. Because I had one, it'd been like four or five years. They just kept making the payment because the names were on the check. And finally, they wanted to just have their name and it was a lot of hurdles uh, to get through that. So, so I don't, I don't know where that is in the policy, but it, but I would like whenever you guys, if we don't get to it before I'm done on the boards, uh, to look at that about how we can, how we can help those. It's not in there.
Can I add to that?
What's that?
So here's a, here's a, here's a married couple. Uh, let's say, let's say it's me, let's say my name's the only one on the count. I pass away, wife's name is not on there. Something happens. Her name's not on the count, so she can't get accounted. She don't even have access to the information here. So once you're talking about how, how to solve that, how do we also come up with an easier way for her to even establish access to information so that she can continue the business with BPU?
Yeah, because sometimes they won't have any credit and they'll have to put a deposit down right in the middle of a thirty-year run with this, with the utility. And all of a sudden, you're asking somebody to put a deposit down. And it's, and it's just a string of unfortunate events. And there has to be a way to put some safeguards into a policy to kind of help guide the process in, you know, in a user-friendly way. That is, that is one thing.
I'm care of that now.
Does that situation come up because we haven't followed the policy?
Service applicant. I don't know.
Because it says all property owners.
We have taken care of that now. So I just wanted you guys to know that before we get in a very long discussion about that. And it does have deceased tenants on page seven. They pointed out it's going to have.
Yeah.
Look for it. But we are able to do that now. One of the ones I remember years ago was someone that I worked on with you. Um, I've worked on several of deceased.
Yeah, and, and it's just, it's.
Play for that now.
You know, a way to like, you know, I, I'll tell you, the, the one thing that I would love to see, and I know that it is, it is so easy to say and so difficult to, to do, which is unparalleled personal servicing with customer service, because, because you're dealing with the public. This is not the same thing as, as what most of us do where we're, we're dealing with a computer or something like that. You're actually dealing with humans and, and, and every personality, you know, is, is a different personality. But, uh, as much as could be put into policies and stuff that basically just guide, you know, the, the customer through changes like this without without any vagueness or anything, you know, make them, make them processes that are easily repeated and, and easy to understand and accessible.
The tricky ones are where there's not a clear air, where they weren't joint tenants. You have, um, perhaps several children or stepchildren and, and or siblings and there's a fight over the property and they're trying to turn off the utilities to kick someone else or someone squatting. So in those cases, it is imperative that we get some legal documents to show who has actual authority of the property. Um, and those have been more than you would think. Those sort of family squabbles.
Okay.
So we have seven point out for seven point out through.
Okay, well, we may get there, but I don't know. That's.
I did want to tell you, Jeff, if it is like a spouse situation, we don't, they don't incur the fees.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I just know, it's just confusing for them, you know, and, and it's, and it's scary for a lot of people, you know, usually the ones that are happening to are older. So, and they're not as adept at dealing with, with businesses and stuff, so. Sorry to digress on that. Anyway. Is there anything else for you on five oh two?
Mostly what I'm finishing up on page three is just that we've changed for the deposit schedule, the deposit schedule on M P C two hundred dash O two in there. So that's the only thing that's remaining on that page that was changed.
So, so here's a couple that, and. Yeah. One that, one that, uh, so under residential service applicants, homeowners, the last couple paragraphs, but the very last paragraph, I read this and you know, in the event a homeowner has not assessed maximum deposit, uh, basically if they've been disconnected for non-payment of a bill for the third time within two years, a deposit is set out, you know, may be imposed, but but I wonder about that as far as if they've always reconnected and paid their bill. They just get behind for a while, but then they come back. You know, they, they've had a history of maybe, you know, being late a couple of times and, and then all of a sudden they run into a stretch where they're late two or three, but, but they come back and make their payments. They're a, they're a good customer. They may be a slow pay, but they are a pay. I mean, there's, slow pay is, is that B tier. And, and it's necessary for business, you know, there's, you're going to have some of those as, as you gain more market segment. So I think that, I, I just don't know if it's right. If you got a person who, you know, an account that, that always ends up paying, sometimes they get behind, because you know what? Forget the deposit. How many, how many penalties have they, how many dollars in penalties have we collected from these people over the years?
Yeah, Jeff, I, I completely agree.
Yeah, way more, way more than a deposit amount.
It's just punitive at that point.
Yeah. So, so then, that's where, that's where all of a sudden you have a customer that goes from, you know, man, it's expensive being a BPU, you know, it's expensive, it's expensive to being an angry customer. That's the kind of, right then, when you throw that deposit in on top of all that other stuff, that's when they all of a sudden turn into one of those customers that will be a voice against the utility in, in the, in the marketplace. So I, I just, I just hazard to charge a long-term customer, one who's always come back. Like I said, you've made so much money off of late penalties that then imposing a deposit on top of that is just, I ju- I just think that's a dangerous, uh, activity.
I, I agree, and I actually would propose to strike it. That one.
Do you want to explain the late penalty process?
Right. You can go ahead.
I mean, the nice thing about it is it does basically say a homeowner. So, you know, they always put a lien on their property.
And, and, and we had this lien was in there. If you find out, there's a place where lien was taken out.
Yeah.
Uh, we don't do that. Uh, we had not done that since we voted on these policies in the past. Talked about it with Angela, there is a cost and there's some paperwork to be, to be done with that. And also we've never put a lien on a property. However, I thought in securing the payment and, and what Gabby and I were discussing was that we had determined last time that if a customer doesn't pay and their services are disconnected, that we need to, because now they're, they're actually, they're establishing a history. If it happens once, maybe twice. If it happens once, maybe twice, but when you get to the third time within a twelve month period, you're, you're kind of establishing a history. And, and when you said, how many times have they gotten late payment charges? They may have gotten late payment charges and not disconnected. However, that's based on now us processing the late payment charge along with, with their payment. However, but if they continue to get disconnected, they are establishing something that they hadn't established in the beginning. And maybe that they weren't given a, a deposit. And so, or because they did establish a good pay history, they were refunded that deposit. Now, if we're establishing that history and we don't get anything to hold, then we're going to have the process again of when customers, if they finalize their service. We don't have any, anything that we're putting towards that. And then we're just hoping that we can collect that, even if they move out of our service territory as well.
And that's where I was talking about redesigning the, the. Deposit schedule to be a smaller base start number and then incremental. Uh, almost like punishment deposits for failure to comply with the contract. So, so those are announced well in advance instead of, you know, so, so that the customer already knows that, look, here's, here's our thing. If, if you miss this many times or late this many times, boom, you're going to have to pay this extra hundred dollar deposit. If you've paid no deposit, you're going to have a hundred dollar deposit right then. If you do it two more times in the next six months, you're going to pay another hundred and fifty. So then, then you're able to save, but it needs to be in a policy that's, that's repeatable. And definable. Which makes it defendable. You know?
I, I, I agree, Jeff, because I, I think, you know, what, the, the problem we have is that. Um, you know, unfortunately. I think without, you know, tying some of these policies to more specifics. Um, and, you know, I think you used the word metrics earlier, um, of, of some sort. Um, it, it just introduces subjectivity to it, right? And, and I think that. You know, that, that's probably gotten us where we're, we're at today to some, to some extent.
Well, if you look at the fee schedule, I mean, we've already turned that around to where. Zero deposit and then you, there's your limited and then there's a substantial. So we're ramping up based on bad payment histories. I guess my question is, other than no credit. No credit risk, no credit history. What else do you want to start out at a lower amount?
What?
Row or something less than a hundred and fifty dollars?
What I'm saying is you cap, instead of, instead of starting a person out, taking them all the way up to, you know, five hundred dollars. You take it up the max at like two fifty, but then understand that there's, there's. Additional deposits that could be levied based upon your payment performance.
Okay.
I mean.
And just, and, and just going back to as, as you wanted to refer to some of the KCC policies. It does say in their policy that utility may at any time after the application. So this isn't a new person, somebody this, that's already been. Done established as a customer upon five days written notice require a new or modified deposit to guarantee payment of bills for utility service. You go down to three, it says a customer, if the customer was disconnected for non-payment two or more times within the most recent twelve month period. The next one says the customer has defaulted on a payment arrangement two or more times within the most recent period. Based on what they're saying here is they will apply the deposit at that time. So it basically kind of, it, it does follow. If, if we're looking at theirs, it does follow what they are also doing. And there says non-payment two or more times. So they're having two or more where we have three. And then we're going to also work then and getting something sent when a person does have two that we're then letting them know you have two, three. A deposit may be applied or a deposit may be increased. But so.
But is there's disconnection or late, late paying?
Disconnection. Customers disconnected from our payment.
There's a difference between late paying and this and this.
Yeah, you know. And I think that that's where you define, find the dollar.
And this section, that's, but this one was talking about disconnect. So that's why I went to the one that said disconnections. Cause that's what it says in here. It says in the event a homeowner who is not assessed maximum deposit, who is not required to pay a deposit or whose deposit was refunded. Is disconnected for non-payment of a bill for the third time within a two-year period. We give a two-year period. They have twelve months.
So each time they're disconnected, each time they're disconnected. Um, I guess depending on what service is disconnected, there are disconnection charges that are associated with those, right?
Yes.
Then there would necessarily be late payment charges as well. Right? Five percent of the outstanding bill.
Five percent of. Five percent of the current bill.
The fee schedule, how does the fee schedule read? I'm reading and it says five, five percent of outstanding current bill. So.
Current bill.
Current bill.
Current bill.
Okay, so.
Everything they owe.
Bill, not outstanding.
Well, then that needs to be defined.
It's on the fee schedule she's looking at.
Hmm.
That's why I was asking a few minutes ago to explain the, the payment charge. And then we kind of went back to the other discussions. So if you want, if you want to walk through that, Lori, Jen, Adam.
So it's just. Yeah, yeah. That was, yeah, go ahead.
So. So if, if your current bill is.
Okay, okay.
Two hundred dollars or whatever, it's five percent of the two hundred. If that two hundred isn't paid, it now goes. Out in time and, and you have another bill for whatever, a hundred dollars. You're only getting five percent of a hundred dollars. That two hundred.
Two hundred is only one time.
It's only one time.
Yes. So you don't keep, you don't keep putting a late fee on top of a, a bill that continues to be outstanding every time, every month that it comes. You don't continue to put a five percent late fee charge on that. So that this way, doing it this way never means.
You know, I want to go back to that because that came up during COVID. And when we were talking about waiving late payment charges during the COVID period. You know, we tried to explain it there, but that, that was twenty twenty. Okay. Well, we're going through that. Now we're three years later. So I think it's good to walk back through. Those are one-time charges unless you just continue to build up unpaid bills and then there's a percentage of. That unpaid bill.
Right, right.
How much do we receive in late payment charges a year?
Um, I'm not exactly sure, but we, that is some information that we will be providing. Just say two fifty a month.
Budgeted about three million dollars a year.
The three million late payment charges. Seven point three million in deposits. Right? I mean, that's the number of the average.
Right. That, that seven point three million, we can't do anything with. We can't use it. We, it's set aside and it's gaining interest.
And it's paid back with interest, right?
With interest, yeah.
Yeah. And the only thing that we are able to get out of that is that. Deposits that were of people who defaulted on their. On their accounts.
When it is finalized.
Yeah, yeah. And that's just a percentage of their total account.
Right.
Do you know how much we receive in disconnect charges per year?
We budgeted about two point three, budgeted about two point three million.
Do you have any actual?
Actual, let's see, this is through September is. One point, uh. One point eight million, I believe.
That's about right.
I think we're at a point where we need to, uh, suspend this discussion.
Yeah.
Right.
We made some progress. So where are we, where are we at?
We're on, we're on five.
Point zero two.
Yeah, on the homeowner's section, resident, residential service applicants, homeowners.
Right.
So we got to pick up speaking there or we want to go to the runner section? Back to the homeowner's section because it only has a small portion at the bottom.
We're going to pick up there.
At the end of that?
Yeah.
Yes, please.
Okay.
Have a motion to adjourn, please.
So move, this Jeff.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Roll call. Mo Vanny Henry.
Hi.
Bryant.
Hi.
Brenneman. Emotion case of.
How can we tell Rob where we go? Probably tomorrow before we're starting, okay.